All right, are we good, Colin? All right. Good evening. It is Tuesday, January 25th. It is 5:00 PM. We have a quorum calling this meeting to order. We will be going into executive session to discuss the following three items. Item 2A, City Council shall convene and disclose the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interest associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas, 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. Item 2B, City Council shall convene and disclose the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the State of Texas versus James Robert Crouch, Cause Number 20211193, Notice of Ordinance Violation for Working Without a Permit at 602 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Bastrop, Texas, including a briefing on the assignment of a visiting judge, appointment of an outside prosecutor, upcoming jury trial, and related expenses. And Item 2C, City Council shall convene and disclose the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes, Section 551.071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in the city limits for possible parkland, drainage, or open space purposes. It is 5:01. We will be going into executive session. We're going to start with Item 2B. Councilmember Crouch will not be joining us, and when we are done with Item 2B, we will move on to 2A and 2C, and Councilmember Crouch will be joining us. We are in executive session. 6 o'clock, and we are out of executive session. We have nothing to report on. We only covered Item 2B, and so we will go back into executive session at the end of the council meeting for Items 2A and 2C. So Item 3, at this time, there's nothing to report for Item 2B. Which brings us to 6 o'clock, and it is the first-ever, the inaugural Mayor's State-of-the-City Address. And bring your popcorn, hope you brought popcorn. It's going to be a video. I have wanted to do something, you know, there's the State of the Union, State of the States, there's other cities that do a State of the City, and it's kind of a lot to take in of what we've accomplished in a year. But I want to give special thanks to Colin, and Cece, and Rick, and Carrie. And it was a labor of love, and the city manager did a tremendous amount of work with pulling the report together, and I know all the folks on staff helped with some of the facts. So it is our intention that this becomes an annual thing. City Manager, your staff is thinking maybe not the first meeting in Jan... We may have to adjust timelines a little bit, but they've put a ton of work into it. And with that, Colin's going to show us the state, first-ever Bastrop State-of-the-City Address. Here you go.
Hello, I'm Connie Schrader, and I have the honor of serving as the Mayor of the City of Bastrop. Welcome to this inaugural State-of-the-City Address. The purpose of this video is to provide a comprehensive overview of the last year and a look ahead forward for next year. It's been a busy year, we have a lot of ground to cover, so let's get started. I want to start with the basics of municipal government and make sure that we're all on the same page about how things work around here. As with most cities in Texas, the City of Bastrop is a home-rule city. Established originally in 1832 as a general law city, we became a home-rule city when the residents approved a new charter designating home rule and stating what some of the rules would be back in 2002. This charter called for a council-manager form of government. City charters are a lot like a state or a federal constitution. It's approved by the voters and establishes the governance for structure for the city. As Mayor, I serve on the City Council along with five other elected officials. The City Council is elected-at-large, meaning all citizens vote for every office. We don't have district awards that you may have heard about in other cities. The governing body is accountable to the people and is responsible for setting policy for the city. Our policy decisions include approving a comprehensive plan, passing ordinances or local laws, approving the budget, tax rates, fees, and hiring a city manager, city attorney, and a municipal judge. In Bastrop, the Mayor runs council meetings but only votes to break a tie. The Mayor sets the council agenda and works closely with the city manager to plan council meetings, and I also serve as the Emergency Management Director. I appoint board members that are confirmed by City Council, and I serve as the Chief Presiding Officer for the city. The city manager implements policy direction and at times recommends policy for council to consider. His main responsibility is directing day-to-day operations of the city, including managing city staff. One way council gives direction to the city manager is through adopting focus areas. Currently, there are nine. This video is organized around these focus areas, so I wanted to make sure you know where they come from. It's pretty easy, they come straight out of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan gives a long-term perspective and provides guidance on things like zoning, public infrastructure we'll invest in, how we regulate land development, things like that. Our current comprehensive plan was unanimously approved in November of 2016. Thank you again if you were one of the 1,500 residents that participated in that process. These focus areas are reviewed and updated annually by the City Council. They're intended to be more short-term and actionable than the broad concepts that are described and contained in the comprehensive plan. These focus areas form the structure around the city manager's budget proposal and the quarterly progress reports provided to City Council. These quarterly reports are chock-full of information and are a great reference document and easily located on the city's website. Our first focus area is fiscal responsibility. The nine focus areas provide direction to the city manager on how to plan to spend taxpayer money. City staff provides council with a draft plan for future capital improvements accompanied by a five-year projection of city finances. The five-year forecast gives council good information to be able to redirect staff expense and tax burden assumptions. This PADD's budget process was a great example. In May of 2021, the city manager, knowing the City Council's priority on investing in city street infrastructure, presented a plan lowering the tax rate on operations while slightly increasing the tax rate on debt, keeping the total tax rate exactly the same. This increase in the debt rate would be utilized to finance a short-term note that would fund much-needed street rehabilitation work on Old Austin Highway and some other streets. At the May Budget Workshop, council supported the proposal. It was included in the city manager's formal budget presented to council in July and unanimously approved in September. The council also provided a preliminary plan for conducting a bond election in November of 2023. Early cost estimates for that bond program are being built into the fiscal forecast and could provide funding for street reconstruction, drainage improvements, and even a recreation center. We're doing planning on those right now, and we will appoint a special bond advisory committee to make recommendations on exactly what should be on the ballot. Our next focus area is communication. Our communication focus area demonstrates our commitment to maintaining two-way communication with our citizens. We know how vital that is in effective decision-making. Here in Bastrop, we work to make sure everything we say and do and publish is excellent, professional, intentional, and truthful. We don't use city resources to publish messages that intend to sway political opinion. We're not trying to sell you anything, and we don't do any spin. We try to stick to the facts. Beyond this video, there's a few other ways that you can keep up with what's going on. After each council meeting, I write a blog called "The Mayor's Blog." It's kind of like Cliff Notes, if you're old enough to know what Cliff Notes are. We also have our website and social media. Both of those include city events, information, and emergency messaging. Warn Central Texas System pushes alerts to registered citizens on their cellphones, landlines, and other devices. Please be sure to sign up at warncentraltexas.org to get all alerts during emergencies. As part of the registration process, you can choose which geographical area you want to receive alerts from. This lets people be informed of emergency alerts issued where their friends and loved ones are anywhere across the state of Texas. Our city manager hosts "Overheard at City Hall," a podcast that's getting rave reviews. You find it wherever you find your podcasts. We also have "Building Bastrop University," which is a monthly opportunity for people to engage in the development process and even give us some feedback on things we might need to change. To improve our community engagement, we periodically host meetings with our stakeholders who work with us to deliver public services, community events, and otherwise meet the needs of the community. Our stakeholders include Visit Bastrop, Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, the Bastrop Museum and Visitor Center, the Lost Pines Art Center, the Bastrop Opera House, the Chamber of Commerce, and the City Manager's Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, just to name a few. Our next focus area is community safety. We are blessed to have trustworthy and responsive professionals leading both our police and fire departments. Even better, we're fortunate that in Bastrop, community safety is a citywide team effort. The best example is our response to last February's winter storm. As I mentioned, as Mayor, I serve as the Emergency Management Director for the city. The city's emergency management plan involves all city departments doing whatever it takes to keep people safe, including stepping out of their normal roles. Police officers and firefighters, in addition to responding to emergency calls, they were checking on our most vulnerable citizens and delivered water to people who needed water. Bastrop Power and Light worked around the clock to keep the power on. I know some of you experienced rolling outages. Those were directed by ERCOT due to the enormity of this unprecedented storm. Public Works personnel worked for days without any real breaks to keep the streets clear and maintain our water supply. Public Works employees were sleeping at the Bastrop Senior Center. Firefighters were sleeping with their trucks in the convention center, and police officers were sleeping at the police station. Despite Public Works' best efforts, we did lose water pressure due to the rolling outages, and I know some of you had boil water notices. We kept the information flowing, and city staff was answering thousands of phone calls around the clock, at home, some of them. They were at home without electric and water services themselves. I'm also personally aware of the work so many of you did to help your friends and neighbors during and after this devastating ice event. The entire Bastrop community stepped up for each other because that's what we do in Bastrop. Crime rate trends the past few years show we are a safe city. This past year was the first time in the city's history that we employed full-time paid firefighters. These new employees have already proven their worth, their presence providing a reduction in overall response times from eight to 10 minutes to four to six minutes of the initial unit arriving on site. Their contributions during the winter storm proved the need for this additional staff right out of the gate. Another public safety initiative in our recently approved Community Development Block Grant to complete Agnes from Shaffer to just south of Seton Hospital. This will provide a much-needed east-west alternative to Highway 71 and will result in improved emergency response times. We have volunteers in many facets of our communities. One special set is our volunteer firefighters. Bastrop has had a volunteer fire department since 1894. During the last year, they put in countless hours of training and responding to calls, and we greatly appreciate them. Like everyone else dealing with staffing issues, the city must be creative in finding qualified candidates. An innovative approach we're using in the police department is to select police officer recruits just before they enter the police academy. Then we agree to help them with their academy education, and the ultimate agreement being they'll become Bastrop Patrol Officers once they graduate. This helps make sure we keep our positions filled. We know making good hiring decisions is key to maintaining our excellent public safety staffing record. Economic vitality. Bastrop is experiencing record commercial and residential growth. Economic vitality is all about sustainability. The pandemic put a damper on tourism, but the numbers show we're trending upward with our hotel occupancy tax revenues. Visit Bastrop, the city's destination marketing organization, brought in over 5,000 room nights, promoting the Bastrop way of life to tourists across Texas and beyond. One of Bastrop's resources is our most beautiful convention center facility, and we're committed to being good stewards of that resource. We provide funds to Visit Bastrop for them to help us market our convention center, and we're so appreciative of their focused efforts. We appreciate them keeping this facility busy. Currently, we're taking steps to have a hotel built right next to the convention center. Past studies have indicated that a hotel with a full-service kitchen and additional meeting rooms would make the convention center much more attractive and would benefit the whole community. Sales tax revenues continue to be strong in Bastrop, and we were strong even during the pandemic. We're all familiar with an 8.25 sales tax. Consumers pay that all the time, but it's distributed across multiple entities. The state collects 6.25%. The county collects half a percent, the city collects 1%, and the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation collects the remaining half percent. The rapid growth in our area compels us to be thoughtful about how we use all sales tax resources. As a result, the City Council has recently devoted significant time to provide clear objectives to the Economic Development Corporation. As we grow, whether it's residential or commercial, the ability to provide wastewater service is the key to economic vitality. On January 12th of 2021, council unanimously approved the construction contract for BAR Constructors to construct this state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant. When they finish their portion of the contract, it will be able to treat 2 million gallons of wastewater per day. The plant's been designed so it can be incrementally increased to a total ultimate capacity of 8 million gallons per day. That will take care of and serve 50,000 people in both the City of Bastrop and in our extraterritorial jurisdiction. When construction of the new wastewater treatment plant is completed, this is the main thing that you'll see. You'll notice it's been designed to look like a ranch house, like all the other ranch houses up and down 304, but you'll know that this ranch house is the administrative and control headquarters for a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant, complete with the latest technology for odor control and effluent quality. I am so proud to be a part of the council that funded the design and construction of the wastewater treatment plant. Should have been done a while ago, and because it wasn't, there's been one side effect, and that is that we've had to recently start hauling sludge from our existing facility. Sludge is a byproduct of the process, and it's exactly what you think it is. Although hauling that sludge is prolonging the life of our current plant, we're all anxious for this plant to be completed, up, and operational. Let's go take a look at our current plant. The current wastewater treatment plant, and we actually have two, but I'm standing in front of the one that was purchased from the City of Austin by the City of Bastrop for $1 back in 1980. The City of Austin was building a bigger plant, and they needed a temporary plant. Once they got their new plant done, they didn't have any use of it, and the City of Bastrop Council purchased that plant for $1. You can say we've certainly gotten our money's worth out of it. Can you imagine how hard it is to keep a plant running in 2021 when it was designed in 1980 and expected to be in service for six months? Shout-out to all the workers at Public Works. Our wastewater treatment experts really take good care of us. We've all heard about supply chain issues, employee shortages, increased material costs. The city is no different. The issues are impacting the cost and schedule of our wastewater plant as well, but we're working diligently with the plant contractor and the contractor that's installing the collection pipes and with our design teams and city staff to expeditiously and fairly keep the project on track. The Economic Development Corporation has enjoyed recent success in bringing agreements for the development of projects inside our industrial park, including Moca Ventures, Colson LLC, and TA Bastrop. The Economic Development Corporation has also been working to plan the extension of infrastructure in the industrial park to create shovel-ready lots. Our next focus area is managed growth. Growth is coming. You either manage it, or it manages you. Our council has prioritized managing that growth. The numbers tell the story. In fiscal year 20, we issued 167 new residential permits compared to 418 in fiscal year 21. You'll see similar growth patterns for the fourth quarter. 120 permits and 18 Platts were submitted for approval. 93 of these permits and seven of the Platts were approved. The map also shows development applications. Veridian, 400 acres and 1,600 homes. Bastrop, Colorado Bend, 546 acres of mixed-use commercial with a primary use being media production. Pecan Park Commercial includes a 400-unit apartment development. And Bastrop Grove Residential has Lennar Homes building 321 lots. The development codes adopted unanimously by City Council in November of 2019 put us in a good position to ensure this growth doesn't put a strain on existing taxpayers and ratepayers. The developers are required to construct the infrastructure necessary to serve their development. The new wastewater plant I mentioned earlier is partially funded by the impact fees paid by these developers. Let's talk about Eden East Farm. They've recently received statewide recognition. It's one of the first projects to be developed after our B-3 codes were approved. It's an urban farm that provides farm-to-fork dining right here in Bastrop at Storehouse. Their creative use of the property for their farm wouldn't have been allowed under the previous codes. We've also made it easier to get a certificate of occupancy. You'll hear people call that a CO, and our building official is committed to expediting the renewal process. We all love our iconic bridge. Although the bridge has not been open to the public since July of 2019, saving it and restoring it to the point where we can all enjoy it again is a priority for council. It was closed due to structural integrity issues, and as you may surmise, it will be expensive to rehabilitate. The estimate prepared in 2019 was $12 million. Bastrop's Old Iron Bridge is historic, iconic, and could be a central gathering point for the community. The strategy for funding the rehabilitation is utilizing both state and federal grant resources. We were recently awarded a contract to Garver Engineering to do just that. Garver has a track record of helping communities on projects like this, and I look forward to the day when pedestrians, bicyclists, and even e-cabs are utilizing the bridge again. We appreciate how the Texas Department of Transportation has kept us informed as we've all patiently waited for the completion of the nine bridges associated with the Highway 71 Improvement Project. It's scheduled for completion in the fall of '22. Have you been to downtown Bastrop recently? Over the past year, we've seen 10 new businesses move in and five businesses relocate to larger spaces in our downtown. One of the unique ways to get downtown is with our Karts Now, or E-Cab. E-Cab was brought to Bastrop by a Department of Energy grant funded to Lone Star Clean Fuel Alliance. E-Cab operates Monday through Thursday, 3 to 9, and Friday through Sunday, 2 to 10, benefiting tourists and locals alike. I'm here at the corner of Chestnut and Highway 71, standing on a recently completed section of the Downtown River Loop Sidewalk Project. We'll be able to loop all the way around. I'm told if you go around twice, it's a 5K. This project was brought to you by a partnership between TechStot, the City of Bastrop, and Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. Recently under construction, it's on schedule to be completed in October of 2022. When we partner, we're able to do great projects for the community. Can't wait to see you on the trail. Our city manager, Paul Hoffman, started in August of 2020 and proposed a new organizational plan in November of 2020. His plan balances workload, utilizes cross-functional problem-solving teams, promotes responsiveness, and values teamwork. City departments are held accountable for being good ambassadors for the city, good teammates to each other, and running departments as efficiently as possible. Currently, the city's management team is going through a facilitated leadership development process that will include diversity and inclusivity training. The city manager puts a priority on hiring well, which is important given 40 positions, or 27% of the entire organization has been staffed just since August of 2020 when his tenure began. Like other employers, we struggle to keep positions filled, especially in Public Works. The city manager's proposed budget included a salary study, resulting in certain salaries being increased and the increasing benefits. We need the City of Bastrop to be a competitive employer. Bastrop residents are encouraged to utilize the online request manager through MyGov to report issues and concerns, such as potholes or other safety issues they see in the community. This graphic from the most recent quarterly report shows the type and status of these requests. For the first time, the city is operating a recreation center. While the current center is temporary and small, we are quite proud of what we've built in just the last year. Please consider joining the recreation program, which includes fitness classes for all ages, discovery days for kids, an open gym, and outdoor fitness unit at Bob Bryant Park. Feel free to join me on Saturday morning for a Bali X class. They are a ton of fun, and I'd love to see you there. We all have our own idea of what makes Bastrop unique. It's important that as we welcome new residents and businesses that we share our perspectives with them and encourage them to find what's special to them. Our historic downtown is busier than ever. During the pandemic, we completed the Main Street Rehabilitation Project, and we're all enjoying those wide sidewalks. For the first time in 200 years, downtown is truly accessible to everyone with full ADA compliance. We're lucky to live in a community that hosts several family-friendly special events. From Patriotic Festival to Veterans Day weekend, from Boobash at Halloween to the Lost Pines Christmas Lighted Parade, there's something for everyone. Just a few days ago, we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy with our annual MLK Walk, this year hosted by the City of Bastrop. For the latest happenings, visit downtownbastrop.com. While you are downtown, visit the public library. They counted over 51,000 visits last year. Check their website for programming and activities for children, teenagers, and adults. Right next to the library in Fisherman's Park is the recently completed Wheeled Sports Plaza. We all call it the skate park. This project has been highly utilized from the day it opened. This year also saw the return of movies in the park. Four movies were shown this fall and will be returning in the spring with more. Whether you're in Fisherman's Park or one of our other mini-parks, there's always something to do. Pick up games of pickleball, special events, or exploring nature trails. We are proud of our parks here in the city. Did you know our Historic Society and Visitor Center served over 7,500 visitors during fiscal year 21? During the fourth quarter alone, they had 2,200 visitors. The Bastrop Opera House had a social media reach, are you ready for this? 521,000 people during fiscal year 21. The Lost Pines Art Center newsletter is a very popular publication with a circulation of over 19,000 readers. I hope you had the opportunity to enjoy the Lost Pines Christmas Lighted Parade. Thousands of people enjoyed the parade, and I hope you were one of them. We're happy to work with the Youth Advisory Council comprised of Bastrop-area students who meet with the city staff every month and learn about different aspects of city operations. They're currently working to develop a service project that they'll complete in '22. The city's newest board is the Cultural Arts Commission, created as a result of the Cultural Arts Master Plan. They're working diligently to implement the key items from the master plan. We love our unique environment here in We love our unique environment here in Bastrop. The members of city council and I were happy to receive our Scenic City Gold Designation at the Texas Municipal League Conference held in Houston just last October. Our recently updated sign code is among the reasons the City of Bastrop qualified for this designation. We've done quite a lot of public messaging on the new sign code, which will be fully enforced in March. Feather flag signs are an example of a sign that will no longer be allowed. City code compliance will begin enforcing those and other prohibited signs in March. For more information, please visit cityofbastrop.org/signs. Our city charter allows council members to serve two consecutive terms. My final term ends in May of '23. I'm very proud of what's been accomplished since 2017, but there will always be more to do. We must continue to manage growth and not let it manage us. This will ensure financial sustainability and preserve what we love most about Bastrop. We must focus on making development pay for itself to avoid rate increases for our current residents. We must prioritize funding for street maintenance. And as always, we must respect and appreciate our dedicated city staff, our wonderful volunteers, and our community partners. Bastrop is special, made so because of the people who honor the city's history and culture. We'll grow, change, and adapt just fine as long as we remember what it means to be Bastrop. We're excited to welcome new residents and businesses and can't wait to see how their threads weave into our Bastrop fabric, creating the tapestry we call home. Thank you for watching this State of the City address. We hope each of you has a safe, healthy, and happy 2022. Truly one of the most nerve-wracking things. That's the first time I've ever seen it. I do not like to watch myself, so appreciate appreciate the applause and appreciate staff that helped work on that. Lot of information in there. All right, it is 6:30, right on the dot, and I am calling to order our regular session. We do have a quorum, and I'm gonna let the youth council, who's sitting right there together, know that I'm gonna pull that item forward after we receive the 8D presentation. So Colin, so you'll know I'll be pulling that up right at the before the work sessions. So I apologize. Normally, I get to meet the people that are going to say our pledge of allegiance, the Bastrop Intermediate School Debate and Government Club. Are you guys with us? All right, do I have J.C. Green? No. Charlotte Percox? No. Charlie Torres? Yay! All right, come on up. Come on up, and you go to school at Bastrop Intermediate School. What grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade? And what is your favorite subject?
Social Studies.
Social Studies. That's awesome. Government's really close to that, just so you know. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise, Ms. Torres is gonna lead us in both of the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for coming to council. You did a great, great job. Pastor Duchesne is not here. Okay, so not gonna do it to chief. If you will remain standing and please join me in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to meet together as a community. Please be with each and every one of us on council. Help us to make clear decisions with wisdom and discernment. We are so appreciative of our first responders, of our community, of our city staff. Be with each of us. Help us to make good decisions, and thank you for the grace that you extend to all of us. In Jesus' name, amen. All right, you can be seated. And before I move on to item 8A, which is the mayor's report, we have a couple of birthdays we need to celebrate. The first one was in the past, so we apologize for that, but we are confident, Councilmember Jackson, that you had an outstanding birthday on January 19th. So let's give him a round of applause. He gets applause and a cupcake, and he'll just have to be strong enough to keep it away from Councilmember Crouch. And then we have a birthday coming up tomorrow, and that is Councilmember Bill Peterson. Let's give him a round of applause. All right, so they both have to have somebody competing with them for their cupcakes. All right, moving on to the mayor's report, I have a couple of quick things before we get going on the mayor's report. Council, at the last council meeting, I gave you a really quick COVID update, and I wanted to do that again. In trauma service area O, the hospitalizations for COVID are up to 18%, and we were around we were just under 15% at the last report, but there are still 211 beds available and 417 vents available. So and I also wanted to let you know that there are for in Bastrop Independent School District, there are 303 active student cases, and that is out of 12,032 students, so that's 2.5%. And there are 89 staff cases, and that is out of 1,360 staff, so that's 6.5%. So there's a smaller number of them, so you know, it's just it's just math. So I know that BISDs work hard, but I know bus drivers and schoolteachers, and I'm sure our youth council could give us some insight into how COVID is impacting their day-to-day school life. So take care of yourself, be responsible, make good decisions for you and your family. I've also gotten a couple phone calls. We're really digging the new TechStot traffic layout, aren't we? It's working working really well for lots of folks. I had a woman explain to me just how happy she was living on Lover's Lane and the traffic issues that they're having there. I was happy to visit with her, and especially happy because she started with mayor. I know it's a TechStot project, and you probably can't do anything. She's like, yes, I didn't have to go through all of that. So I shared that with our city manager, who immediately visited with our police force, and it is my understanding that the TechStot contractor has is hiring an off-duty police officer, so they're gonna try to help with mitigating traffic. And there's also some striping that's gonna be done that may try to help with some through traffic. I think all of us know we are gonna be super, super happy when the bridges are done, but during construction is just not that much fun. And I and I totally understand it, and traffic is nasty bad, but it's not gonna be that way forever. So wanted you to know that, yes, we are aware that there are some issues there. All right, Colin, if we jump in, I'm gonna talk about the Rolling Pines Fire just real briefly, and then the city manager's gonna go into some more detail. There's a reason that the biggest picture in the middle of that screen is our fire chief, Andreas Rosales. He is a rock star. I've known that for a number of years. I've known Andreas since before he wants to admit that I've known Andreas. I've worked with his mom for decades and decades ago. He is such a gift to the City of Bastrop, and they're gonna have an explanation. One of the things that we have is an agreement of automatic mutual aid, and we have a fantastic relationship with Bastrop ESD Number Two, and their chief, Josh Gill, called Chief Rosales and said, I'm on a structure fire, and I need some help. And that's how Chief Rosales ended up being the IC commander for for the fire. Some information that I want to share a little bit of what the Commissioners Court talked about. Yes, it started as a prescribed fire by Texas Parks and Wildlife. The burned area inside the park was 237 acres. Out of bounds of the park was 812 acres. So you you've heard a lot of reporting about the 812. Well, it's the 812 plus the 237 for a total of 1,049 acres. They account for it separately because there's a lot of numbers that they track, and they have to keep up with equipment, and that's why they talk about what was inside the park and what was outside the park. Then there was McAllister on Friday, and people were like, what in the world is going on? Well, that's what happens when you're driving a truck that's pulling a trailer, and the trailer comes off, and you are dragging the trailer and the chains along the pavement, and the sparks go and start catching, I believe it was six different places. Andreas may correct me, but basically, we're starting a fire as we're going down the street, wondering why everyone's honking at us. So that's what happened at McAllister, and we're all all of us are very sensitive to smoke, and for that to happen Friday after the fire had happened on Tuesday, it was just like, what in the world is going on? The funds that have been expended on the 812 acres that burned, so far, the total is It was not a state of emergency, so there's different FEMA dollars and things that are clear, but trust me when I say this is not over. Had conversations with Carter Smith, and he explained to me that TPW will have a third-party independent consultant that does an investigation on exactly what happened. It's very much like a plane crash when they have the outside experts come in and evaluate things. It is certainly Judge Poppy's the person, the main contact. None of the fire ever threatened the City of Bastrop. We did open our shelter for the firemen. We were there to support, but we are not involved with it. But our citizens deserve an answer. Every single person who lives inside the city limits is a county resident and pays county taxes and deserves to have an answer of how it started and how this is never, ever, ever, ever going to happen again. So when you look at these pictures, one of the things that you'll notice on the upper right-hand side, on the right-hand side, both the upper and lower picture is the Vaughn House. And I'm not gonna talk too much about that, but I believe that anytime the Vahns see Chief Rosales and a couple of his firefighters, they're probably getting free lunches for the rest of their lives. If you go below the picture of Chief Rosales, I grabbed both of these two shots right away, that's the dam. That's rebuilding the dam out at the state park, so we will all be happy to have our Lake Bastrop back. They're making progress, and I took a couple of quick pictures of that. So that's we are currently under a burn ban. Judge Poppy issued that late Friday, and it went into effect last Saturday at 6:00 a.m., and it will expire on Friday unless they meet and decide to extend that, but we are currently under a burn ban. All right, if we go to the next slide, you will see some of the things that I have been doing between January 4th and the 20th. We talked about the MLK event, and you saw some pictures from that. It was a great event. We did the walk together, and then we did a virtual program in the convention center, and I'm sure Councilmember Jackson will have some things he wants to add about that. I was the emcee for Farm Street Opry, and the singers were Zach Clifton and Ronnie Corbin. And Zach Clifton learned how to play guitar when he was like nine years old and started writing songs when he was 12, so he's not very talented, but we let him sing. He was awesome. He was really, really awesome. Rollo Insurance had their ribbon cutting. I did that earlier this week. And the upper right-hand corner, the Our City Rec Center made arrangements for the We Are Blood to have a mobile blood drive there, and they had 26 slots, and they had 24 people show up. And sometimes people show up, and if you're if you're sick or whatever, they're not interested in your blood that day. So of the 26 people that signed up, 24 people gave blood, and four people walked up and didn't already have an appointment, but they were able to work them in. So they got 28 units, which they were thrilled about because one of the ways they get blood is going to universities, because college students are always happy to give blood. And with so many people not being in school, it's been hard to do some of the blood drives. What you don't know about this picture, this is me being brave and Assistant City Manager Rebecca Gleason being Assistant City Manager Rebecca Gleason. This was the first time in my life I ever gave blood. I'm almost always anemic, and they won't take it, and I was like really not sure if I was gonna do this, and the next thing I knew, they were sticking needles in my arms, Councilmember Peterson. It was kind of scary. Rebecca was very laid back and like, whatever, because she does it all the time. Just below that was a Bali X class, tons of fun, like I mentioned in the State of the City. You ought to come come hang out with us on a Saturday. That was a lot of fun. The picture below that is the chamber banquet. This is proof that I do have a husband, and he does have a sports jacket, because you won't see him in it very often, but we had a really great time, and that is Steve Munistery, who's with the Governor Abbott's office that was the speaker. I hit the live after 5:00, and I want to say that as of 3 o'clock today, 347 people had voted in the early voting election. That is out of 6,226 registered voters in the City of Bastrop. So if you are not one of the people who took advantage of early voting, please, please, please make sure that you vote on Saturday, the 29th. The next slide shows the things that I did between the 21st and the 25th. You'll see that I'm calling out again. Please make sure that you vote. I was at the annual military inspection this morning. It was great. Can't wait to share some pictures with that. And then the next slide will show things that I'm doing between now and our next council meetings. The Best Breakfast has been canceled for this Friday. Several of us are going to Sugar Land for the TML Elected Officials Conference, and I counsel want to bring to your attention, on February 8th, we will have our normal city council meeting, and then on February 9th, we will have a special city council meeting. That's the first day that Texas state law allows us to canvass the vote results of the January 29th election. So that's everything that I have, and I have two people with birthdays, so I'm going to start with Councilmember Peterson for birthdays, because he got the second cupcake. He's gonna get to go first on city manager or council member reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot, just to let everybody know, I turn 27 tomorrow.
There you go. I love it. Great for 27. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, unlike Councilmember Peterson, I I turn 69 on Wednesday, so I guess I'm a little bit older. But I just wanted to, on behalf of the Bastrop County MLK Holiday Commission, I just wanted to thank the City of Bastrop for all the hard work that they did in helping us to host the 33rd Annual Walk for Peace, Justice, and Equality. It was really a little bit different this year. It was different last year because of COVID, but we did the walk, actually, we had the walk here in town, and we had a great turnout of people that did walk from some of the historic sites here in town. And then we had to virtually do the program, where we had students from we had six high schools in Bastrop County recommended. Not all six students were able to make it, but we do have that available online. And it was just a very good cooperative program, the cities and the school district and but I mean, the City of Bastrop just outdid themselves working with it, and I just wanted to thank all of those that were involved. I start naming names, I'll leave someone out.
It's dangerous, isn't it?
I'm gonna be safe in doing that, so thank you for that. Later that same day, on that Monday, the 17th, the Bastrop Opera House was invited to go and host, I mean, and be part of the halftime show at the Spurs game at the AT&amp;T Center. So after running around all morning and half the afternoon, I jumped in my car and followed the Opera House to San Antonio and watched them watched our people from our community participate and do an excerpt from Crowns, which is their musical that they're gonna be doing that's gonna open the week starting the 4th of February. So that was really exciting, and I must say that they were well-received, and our own video expert, Colin, will be probably sharing some things from that, because he went and taped the rehearsals and everything, and it was a long day, but it was well worth it because people were saying, oh, Bastrop, y'all are from Bastrop. And we proudly saying, yes, it's Bastrop. We're from Bastrop. Last but not least, on Valentine's weekend, the 13th and the 14th, our very own Terry Lynn Moore and several other singers will be performing at the Bastrop Opera House for a cabaret, Valentine Cabaret. And so that's- And so that should be a lot of fun. So hope that you'll come and join Terry and me as well, singing some wonderful songs for lovers on that 13th and 14th of February. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Rogers.
I have nothing this week. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Crouch.
I think most of the things I've been doing have been chamber involved, the banquet and lunch and the coffee this morning with the chamber was a pretty nice event. It was, I don't know, 10 or 12 people there, so it was kind of neat. And then I've been helping Mr. Hoffman communicate a little bit with trying to get the rodeo arena used a little bit more and other than that, that's, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me quickly thank you personally, Mayor Schrader, for the work you put into the State of the City address. Thank you for going a bit off script with the sludge is exactly what you think it is line. I think we're going to borrow that line around City Hall and describe a lot of things that's exactly what you think it is.
Exactly what you think it is.
Right. And thank you also for the great introduction about Chief Rosales and the Bastrop Fire Department's role in the, in the state park in Bastrop County Fire from last Tuesday and Wednesday. We'll echo your comments about Chief Rosales. A great, he brings to the table a great servant's heart, but his skills in an emergency is also the product of a dedication to, to training that he also instills with, with his team. And so I'm asking Chief Rosales to come to the podium and take up part of the city manager's report and, and you started the story on how the Vaughn House in particular was protected, but we've got some other video to show and Chief Rosales is going to narrate and describe what the, what the Bastrop Fire Department's response there was all about.
Yes, Mayor, Council, City Manager. So, Rowan Pines, we absolutely, I'm very proud of our team, proud of our department and all the departments that responded, our families, our wives, everybody that supports us whenever we go on those calls. They were long nights. I think I was there for over 24 hours that day. Some of the crews were there for 18, 20 hours, just doing what they, they signed up to do. But several agencies were involved. We performed through our mutual aid agreements and our auto aid agreements and they came from all over the state to aid us, including several surrounding counties, Fayette County, Lee County, Gonzalez, some Travis County, I think AF Austin Fire was there. And then there were some Tiflis units that were from, I think I saw Roanoke and some other cities through the Dallas area. So phenomenal response. The guys did a great job. And so part of the initial response was, was our team, was myself and two of our, or three other guys that were assigned to two brush trucks. And so I want to show a little bit of what they saw when we got there. And I think, I'll kind of talk over this as we go. Should play. Yeah. So these guys were assigned to the Vaughn House and the mayor spoke about the Vaughn property. They were able to defend it with two brush trucks as it was fully surrounded all the way around. You'll see here in a minute, it'll transition to the fire. The fire is approaching from the south to the property and these, this homeowner did an excellent job of creating some space for us to be able to defend their property. And so, here in a minute, it transitions again. This was right off their front driveway, right off maybe 50 feet from their front porch. And so this kind of surrounded all the way around. And when we talk about defensible space, this was kind of what it looked like from the other side. So the guys are on the, oh, close to the house, this was the opposite side of it. This is what it looked like from the roadway as you drove past. Those are our, our command vehicles there. And then as you see overhead, so the crews set up around the perimeter there were the, around the house and it approached from the south and then moved across and across 21. And when we talk about defensible space, we like to see zones, different barriers and different levels of cleaning in between your, your property. We actually will do surveys and assessments to help you get to this. So if you live in certain areas, we call it the wooi or the wildland urban interface, which Tahitian is our biggest wooi within the city. But we do assessments and we'll come out and do a survey and help you establish those different zones. All you got to do is call us, we'll send the crew out there and they, they do those surveys. But the biggest thing is communication. Sign up for WarrenCentralTexas.org. Go there, sign up for the different alerts that are available. That's how we communicate, whether it's reverse 911 or just regular text messages. Today, there was a, an email that went out that was to the residents about the, I think it's the flood plain, right? I think I saw flood plain meeting. And so signing up for those and then also signing up for our social media accounts, all of them. We have Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. Get on there and sign up for those. We post updates as often as we can and the county has their, their Facebook as well and some different social media accounts. And so following those help get information to you during the times of emergency. Other than that, we have been working with the Texas Forest Service to, to do assessments for the whole city, for the wooi, for the urban interface. Those are still in the research prog, through the research, we're still in the middle of that. We've met with them several times. I think the mayor's joined us in a couple of meetings. And so it's a, it's a long process of doing assessments throughout the entire, the county. They were looking for funding. I think we found some funding to, to help do these surveys. And then we'll bring that to you guys to adopt the wooi code and to adopt certain codes that help us with pushing forward with those, those assessments. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it. Some of the guys are here. I called them out because they came in, they came to call me out. So the guys did a great job. I can't ask for a better team. Paid staff and volunteers, they all were there, they all supported us. I think everybody came in. We spent lots of hours, but yes, any questions?
So Andres, I think it's important to note that for city residents to know that part of all the bases was that you always had equipment and men at the fire station in case there was a structured fire. You want to talk about that at all?
Yes, yeah. So we sent two brush trucks, tinder and some other apparatus there, but stayed back and these guys, there were five guys that stayed back and they were covering basically all the calls that were going on because, just because the fire was going on, there were still car wrecks and EMLs and things going on in the city and they were here supporting us. As well as other, other partners came in, Heart of Pines, ESD One, they were also supporting us, taking calls. And so it was a big group effort, but yes, we, we had the coverage, made sure the city was covered during that time, so.
Well, we've made you stand at the podium. Can we make the, your firefighter stand up so we can give him a round of applause? Thank you very, very much. Council, any questions for Chief Rosales?
Just a thank you and thank you to your team. Guys did a great job.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
During bad weather too, for the second, second, third days, I guess of that fire was, was that cold and north and really cold.
Yeah, it was cold out there for sure. Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Andres. So moving on with the city manager report, there is, I mentioned this at the last city manager report, Council, there is a public meeting for people to find out more about the drainage master project that is underway. The city's consultant will give a presentation about the methodology that they'll go through in conducting that master plan. There has been a survey instrument available online for folks to respond to and provide information to the city and to the consultant about particular flooding issues that they've experienced on their property. That survey will be something else that is described at this public meeting and that opportunity to respond to the survey will be, continue to be available for a while. So if you're interested in flooding in Bastrop and the city's plans to develop capital projects to address it, if you'd like to in particular, talk about your particular experiences, please come to that meeting that's at the convention center tomorrow evening and I can't read that, but I think it starts at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Mayor. Council, we will meet again on February the 8th and here's a list of some of the items that'll be on that agenda. Again, we've been working for a while towards the development of policy direction from the city council to the Economic Development Corporation. The EDC at their monthly meeting yesterday received a presentation from our consultant, Joe Esch, who has met with you before. Council, if you haven't seen that, that EDC meeting last night, I'd encourage you to look that up and watch it. We were there to receive feedback from the, the EDC members on their thoughts about where this process is going. We did receive quite a bit of feedback. We received some very direct comments. We will have a response to those comments as we bring this recommended, recommended policy to you on February the 8th. I'd encourage you to watch that meeting for some, for some context. We are also acting on second reading depending on what happens tonight on an election in May and in addition to the council election to make some home rule charter changes that have been described to you by the city attorney. Council, we continue to seek grant funding for a couple of large projects out there and so we're going to ask you for approval to award an administrative services contract for that. In particular, this is the Gills Branch Drainage Project. That's a significant drainage project. We've been heretofore unsuccessful in funding that. We're also seeking funding for some erosion protection along the Colorado River through town. We've tried there before too, so we keep seeking grant funding for those two projects. And speaking of grants, and the mayor described this priority of the city council in the State of the City address, we continue to seek funding for the rehabilitation of the bridge and we're bringing to council a proposal to enter into a contract with an engineering firm who has had some experience and success in seeking similar funding for similar projects. So we'll present that to council on February the 8th. And we will also present the, the quarterly report. This time it'll be for the first quarter of this fiscal year. So the, the projects will be different because of the new fiscal year, the capital projects, the management projects that were approved in this year's budget. You'll hear scopes and schedules and statuses on all of those activities. And that's it, Council. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for city manager? All right, we are moving on to item 8D, receive annual racial profiling report from Bastrop Police Department. Chief Nagy.
We got a clicker?
Perhaps we can afford two clickers, maybe.
I don't know. Pretty careful.
No more cupcakes. Got to buy another clicker.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, I am pleased to present the Bastrop Police Department's annual 2021 racial profiling report. So this year, a lot of the slides are going to look the same. A lot of the methodology is going to look the same as you have seen in the past couple of years. There will be a couple of minor tweaks that you'll see in a couple of slides and then of course, the data has changed as well. So in 2021, we made 2,560 traffic stops. Then we categorized in those into four sections, that being was a warning issued, was a citation issued, was a warrant and arrest issued, or was a citation and arrest made. During those, we categorized the driver's gender, the race, ethnicity. The ethnicity, was it known prior to a traffic stop? The reason for? The location of the stop? Was a search conducted? The type of search? Was contraband located? The types of contraband? Of course, the final result of a traffic stop was an arrest made, that type of arrest? And then lastly, whether or not any bodily injury occurred as a result of the traffic To analyze that data, we use percentages of all those bullet points I just listed. It's important to note as we go through this program, all data is one-to-one comparisons. So if you receive a citation, if you're driving and you receive two citations, the only citation we put into the data is the one that was used for the probable cause to make the initial traffic stop. So what's new? This year, we contracted with Alex Del Carmen to help us assist, audit, analyze, evaluate our process and then also our data. Dr. Del Carmen is the subject matter expert nationwide. I actually had a conversation with him last night and he has given a presentation on racial profiling to the National Academy for the FBI. He did four quarterly reports and then one year in report you found with your council packets. We compared data, so this is going to be a little different this year, data with the U.S. Bureau's Fair Road Standard, which basically says how many people in your particular population have access to vehicles versus solely just using the population, for example, of the city of Bastrop. And then actually, then we added additional avenues on how to file a complaint and I'll get to those in a couple of minutes. So the methodology, this is much the same as last year. You'll see a lot of vertical columns. It's very important that as you go through this process, you look vertically and not horizontally. So to the left, you're going to see the whole numbers on each column. On the right, you'll see the percentage of those whole numbers on that column and that column only. So a bit about percentages, of course, the more numbers you have, the whole numbers you have, the more statistical relevance or conclusion you'll have with your particular percentage. As I start my program, the number's going to be much higher and as the program concludes, we'll end with much smaller numbers and what's smaller percentages to three, two, and even some zeros. All right, so let's get started. We made 2,560 traffic stops. About 67% of those were on city streets and about 33% of those were on state highways. There is going to be a little intermix how the officers tabulate that. So a good example is Chestnut slash Loop 150. They might pick either or, but this still gives us a pretty good idea of where my officers are making the traffic stops. Was the race known prior to a traffic stop? The vast majority of times, so 99% times, it was not known. This is going to be the whole numbers broken down by race or ethnicity. So it's going to be eight, 35, 284, 15, 10, 723 for the total of 2560. This next slide is using the percentages. So starting from the left, we have the percentage of total traffic stops broken down by race, our percentage of citations, our percentage of warnings. And then that changed, so we're, once again, we're using the approximate population that has vehicle access to the far right. And then we have a graph that kind of shows those, it tries to give a comparison. This is the race and ethnicity broken down by gender, but then also, yes, by gender. So our female's going to be in the left column and our right. So remember that our, on the left, we have our, our numbers followed by the percentage. So why do our traffic stops occur? The majority are just about 53% occurred because of moving traffic violation. Most offenses is going to be speeding, maybe it's not using a turn signal, followed by vehicle traffic violation, so a taillight, maybe they have expired registration. And then the remaining are be for violation of law. It's most often going to be something like a DWI. And then pre-existing knowledge might be for a warrant and/or maybe we know the driver is habitual, the driver's, our driver's license that might get stopped. This is going to be those reasons broken down by race, sort of moving traffic violation, the pre-existing knowledge, the violation of law, and the vehicle traffic violation. So of course, we conduct searches throughout our, those 2,560 traffic stops. We conducted 80 searches, which is three, just about 3%. And I really like this fact because what it shows is that we are taking people's Fourth Amendment rights very seriously. So we're not just arbitrarily searching people. When you're searching just about 3% of the cars, that, that's a good number to have. Of those 80 searches, we located contraband 62 times for a total of about 76%. When a search was conducted, what type of search occurred? The first is going to be a consent. This is just- This is just simply the officer asking the driver, can I search your vehicle? Contraband in plain view, this might be something that is illegal, just sitting on the seat. An incident to arrest is just typical, where we're arresting the driver, and we find something on their person as we're beginning to take them to jail. An inventory is when we are inventorying their vehicle, preparing to take that to the impound yard. We might find something in your vehicle. Probable cause, this is where I smell something, and then I search your vehicle based on that smell. And lastly, I'm also required to put the no search. So, of all our searches, probable cause was the most popular. When we did locate contraband, and what did we locate? We located drugs about 76% of the time, followed by alcohol at 19%. We had a couple of other. We did not seize any currency, and we had some weapons of stolen property one time. These are those types of searches, broken down by race, our consensual searches, our probable cause, contraband in plain view, incident to arrest, and then inventory. So, once again, you'll get the whole numbers on the left side of the column, and those percentages on the right side of the column. What contraband was found? And did we make arrests solely based on that contraband? So, once again, I have the percentages on the left column. Did we locate contraband? And then, what did my officers do as a result of locating that contraband? This is also a good signal, because we are not just arbitrarily putting people in jail just because we can. So, if we find something, a lot of times, we might actually move them down the road with just a citation, maybe a summons, rather than put them in actual physical jail. So, what types of arrests were made otherwise? We might arrest you for a violation of traffic law, violation of the penal code, an outstanding warrant for your arrest has been issued, and then local law. And the local law is also the ordinances. Did bodily injury occur as a result of a traffic stop? The answer is no, and I'm always proud to say that. I don't think that we had any use of force instances that result from a traffic stop in 2021. Compliments and complaints, we always welcome any complaint that you might have. You can always file a complaint with the Bastrop Police Department. You can come to the City Hall and file a complaint. There is my email you can always file through cnagy@cityofbastrop.org, the City of Bastrop website, and then also this year, on each individual citation that you get, individual warning, it has how you can process your complaint directly that way. That will conclude my presentation. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Chief, Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, I had a question on a slide. Maybe it's just my confusion. If you'll go back to the slide where was the driver's race or ethnicity known before the stop?
I know what it looks like.
So, on that slide, you say that you had 11 stops that you knew it.
Yes.
Right? Couple of slides back where you talk of breaking down, let me find it again, sorry. Why did the traffic stop occur? You have 20 that you stopped with a pre-existing knowledge. So, if you had a pre-existing knowledge, wouldn't you already know about that person? Why aren't those numbers the same?
Yeah, so pre-existing knowledge might be that we know they have a warrant for their arrest, or we think they have a warrant for us. It could be a good example is the driver's license, but could also be that they were reported as maybe a theft suspect or something like that. So, we might not always have that data.
Say that again.
So, a good example is if someone calls in. So, we don't just purely calculate traffic stops. We also calculate motor stops where they contacted police. So, if someone calls in a theft on a particular person, we might stop that person, but we really don't, we might not know the race at that particular time.
All right, I just was making sure why those numbers didn't match, because one says you know, and one says you don't know.
Absolutely, that's a good question. Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions?
Good job. Great to have the information out there. Glad that you're sharing the complaints, and compliments are always welcome. I know that, so.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, as promised, we're moving on to item 13A. And 13A can be found about the middle of page four. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2022 of the city, the city of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the youth advisory council appointments of the mayor as required in section 3.08 of the city charter, providing for a appealing clause and establishing an effective date. I'm going to call names, and if you are here, if you will come forward, you're going to stand and face the audience. And after I've called all the names, I'm going to pick up the oath from our city secretary, and I'll swear all of you in at the same time. Before I call you up, you have been working with some folks and learning some things about government. And I want to especially personally thank Chris White, who is volunteering his time as he is very dedicated to the community and is possibly younger than you, Mr. Peterson. He may, I think he's under 27, and appreciate the time that he spends with our youth and everything that he does for our community. And I know that Candace and Assistant City Manager Rebecca Gleason have spent a lot of time with these students as well. Okay, I'm, and I'm apologizing in advance for not pronouncing names correctly, but if I call your name, if you're here, if you please come forward. Ambrose Kapitanis, Gwendolyn Ibarra, Mabel Wu, Kylie Bagwell, Emily Posco, Aiden Christensen, Solomon Staples, Romero Vargas, Allison Gorman, Harper Imenez, and Natalie Rebellis. How bad did I do on Natalie's name? How do you say her last name? Yes, I should have more confidence. Okay, all right. This is the same oath we all take, just so you'll know. So, this is good practice for you to be a future elected official. All right, this is the old, I'm going to say, I state your name. Please don't say state your name, okay? Say your name loud and proud, all right? I state your name.
I.
Thank you. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of the youth advisory council.
Of the youth advisory council.
Of the city of Bastrop, Texas.
Of the city of Bastrop, Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution laws and ordinances.
The Constitution laws and ordinances.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And this city.
And this city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. All right, the way this works, when you swear an oath like that, you have to, now you have to put your signature to it. So, if you will see the city secretary, she will have you sign the oath. And welcome to the youth advisory council, and thank you so much for your time and for your commitment. And we're going to take a picture. Always happy to have folks engaged. Okay, we're going to. Yeah, Councilmember Rogers?
I did want to compliment you on having a good variety from all the different schools on this advisory board.
I so want to take credit for that and deserve none, that Dr. Lee takes care of that, because they have grade requirements in different schools and different grades and so.
Well, I was happy to see it, not, you know, Cedar Creek, Bastrop, and even the Colorado River Academy was on here, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
Absolutely. When they first formed the youth council, they came up with some of the qualifications to make sure, they wanted to make sure they weren't all seniors and that there could be some consistency. So, yes, working together, and it's a really, really great group of people. All right, we are going to quickly do citizens' comments, and then we're going to have our un-audited monthly financial report. For citizens' comments, I have Willie Peterson signed up to speak. And we always want to hear from Ms. Peterson. Are you going to sing "Happy Birthday" to Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, yes, yes.
I don't think so. First, I'd like to say, I'm happy to be here this afternoon. As everyone knows, our son James passed away January 5th of congested heart failure. He was 46 years old. I'm going to say a couple more things, so I won't get overwhelmed. Tom Scott makes the best beans in the world. He came by with a very big pot for us, and it was so big, we ended up having to take it out Saturday, also out to the church, and everybody really enjoyed it. I haven't got Jimmy's ribs yet, so I'm still waiting on Councilman Jimmy's ribs. I was really shocked when Bill was sitting for his meeting that Tuesday night, when the mayor announced my son's name and that he had passed away. And I thought, that was so wonderful for you even to mention him. You would not believe that, but my son was very popular in Bastrop, in Austin, just about everywhere. A lot of people knew him just as June Bug, not his name as James Edward Peterson. I have, Bill has a very large family, but I have a large family. I have, there's 14 sisters, the Hodge girls in my family. But don't get uproar, because there's only two of us that live in town. And that's me and my sister, Banetta. Everybody else lives somewhere else, which Doc knows, and some of them live in Cedar Creek. So, if you were thinking that this family was going to vote, they don't live anywhere around here, except for the ones that live in Cedar Creek. But anyway, I just wanted to tell everyone that came by the house, that also came to the funeral. I was deeply moved. And I just want to tell y'all, thank you so much. And if y'all don't know it, I truly and deeply love my husband. He has stood there for me the whole time. We have two daughters and a lot of grandchildren, but we don't have any grades yet. So, I'm hoping for some grades. But I just want to say to the city of Bastrop, thank you so much. My husband said, it's cold in here, and I'm fine. But it's cold in here. So, he got the time wrong. I'm going to have to chew him out about that, because he knows I have to go to bed at 7:00 at night, because I get up at 4:30 a.m. to be in Smithfield to drive my bus. I also want to say thank you, if I could, to Elgin Funeral Home. They were wonderful. So, hopefully, y'all won't need them, but if you do, Elgin Funeral Home was fantastic. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Ms. Peterson. We love you, and we love Councilmember Peterson as well. Thank you to the Peterson family. Very, very blessed to have you guys. Thank you. All right, we are going to go back up one to item 10A, receive presentation on the un-audited monthly financial report for the period ending December 31st, 2021. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Maybe column will take me backwards. All right, so I'm reporting on the December. We're through our first quarter of our fiscal year, and revenue in the general fund is continuing to be very strong. Sales taxes approximately 9% over budget. It's 14% over, over like last year at the same time. Development fees are 36% of the budget. You know, I mean, if you look at it, we would be right at about 25, so 36 were coming in over that estimate. These are just some of our funds that are struggling a bit, not really all that much. Street maintenance, it all has to do with interest and how we're earning the money that we have in that fund right now. And also, the Hunter's Crossing pit fund, the assessments and the, and the timing of when those are paid. So, I forecast what I have seen historically, and we are running behind my forecast. All other funds are performing positive to forecast as far as revenues are concerned. On the expense side, everything looks good. Do you have any questions for me?
Would you remind me when you said you were going to true up with Visit Bastrop on hotel occupancy funds, because we're running pretty good ahead.
Right, so, and we will be bringing back a budget amendment.
Okay, excellent, excellent. I appreciate that. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Councilmember Rogers?
I wish every report looked that great.
I know. So far, so good.
Revenues are up, expenses are down. It's a, all right, excellent. That's, that's right up there. Was anyone hurt after the arrest? No, like some, some things are just easier. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Waldron. We appreciate that. Counsel, we're on the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, I think there was a citizen's comment for 12F, and I don't have that paperwork up here with me. So, item 12F is pulled because we had a citizen sign up to speak on that one. But Madam Secretary, if you would read, Counsel, does anybody else want anything pulled off the consent agenda? Oh, we are, it is 7:24, and Counsel is going to take a quick bio break, and we will come back and read the consent agenda. So, we are in a quick recess at 7:24. All right, it is 7:27. We are back in session, and it turns out the citizen is wanting to speak at PMZ, not tonight, so we don't have anything pulled off the agenda. And Madam Secretary is going to read the entire consent agenda for us.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 12A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the January 11th, 2022 meeting. Item 12B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 202-02 to approve a change in the zoning for 78.128 acres out of land, out of Bastrop Business and Industrial Park Phase 1, Block A, Lot 1, from P2 Rule to P-EC Employment Center, and establish the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park zoning concept scheme on 146.213 acres in the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park subdivision, with the condition of adding a 75-foot green belt buffer along the south and east sides of the park, in which trees cannot be removed, located south of SH 71, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repellor, severability, and enforcement, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Item 12C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-14 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, to approve the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division, OG-DOG grant for a crime scene vehicle with no matching funds from the city of Bastrop at a total cost of $74,745.45, authorizing the chief of police as the grantees authorized official, providing for a severability clause, and establishing an effective date. Item 12D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-16 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, to approve a standard contract with Arch Technical Services LLC for 30, for third-party building review and inspection services in an amount not to exceed $800,000.01, authorizing the. Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Providing for a Repelling Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 12E, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2022-18 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to Approve a Standard Contract with Safe Built LLC for Third-Party Building Review and Inspection Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $650,000.00, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Providing for a Repelling Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 12F, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2022-19 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving a Public Improvement Plan Agreement with JOT Holdings LLC for Legends Co., Section 2, as Attached in Exhibit A, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Providing for a Repelling Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Segue.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Council, I'm taking us back to 13A because we swore them in, but we didn't approve the resolution. I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2022-22 by Councilmember Rogers and a second by Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2022-23 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop to Approve City of Bastrop to Receive a Grant from the St. David's Foundation for $250,000 in Contribution to the City of Bastrop's Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Authorizing the City Manager to Sign a Grant Agreement on Behalf of the City, Providing for a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Gleason.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I am proud to be here before you this evening to ask you to accept a grant from the St. David's Foundation in the Amount of $250,000 for the Rewriting of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. A robust Parks and Recreation Master Plan will include a pretty extensive needs assessment, an analysis of our assets, recommendations for development, prioritization of needs and funding recommendations. Our current master plan was written in 2008, and it was updated in 2015. Texas Parks and Wildlife recommends that you update your master plan every five years and completely rewrite it every 10. So our current plan is out of date. We know since our last update in 2015, we have seen a lot of changes to the demographics of our community. We have a lot of families moving in, and our average age is dropping. So it would make sense that our park and recreation needs would be changing as well. So it's time to get an accurate needs assessment. The city applied for the St. David's Grant in September of 2021. In December, we were let, known that we were awarded the grant, and just this month, we received that contract. Since the application of that grant, this council is well aware that we have seen a lot of things change on the recreation horizon for the city of Bastrop. Number one, we now have an incredible opportunity before us. City Council agreed through the signing of a letter of intent to collaborate with the Emile Multicultural Center, which is an exciting development for our community in hopes to bringing our city a recreation center. And so with that, we wanted to take a moment to talk about the level of commitment for St. David's, what they're needing for us in addition to the level of commitment for the Emile Center. So the St. David's Foundation, they are looking for us to create a robust Parks and Recreation Master Plan with a comprehensive community engagement plan. The goal of that plan is to really ensure that we are getting to every sector of our community, especially those that have been considered traditionally underserved in various, in various different areas. In one area we want to focus on is our youth, and that's through activation of our Youth Advisory Council that you just met, but also in the areas of diversity and serving different age groups. So that community engagement plan would be extensive to ensure that we get a really robust needs assessment out of it. With that, we are estimating, and we let St. David's know that it's about $125,000 worth of staff time to oversee that project. We will also owe them two written reports, and we are required to utilize and partner with Bastrop County Cares. We've had several great conversations with them, and they are super excited to be on board. Also, all work on that project need to be completed within one year of us starting. So it's a tight timeline and a big project, but we think what will come of it is a really robust master plan that our community can follow to really allow us to increase quality of life through Parks and Recreation for our city citizens. In addition, we know that Council just signed a letter of intent with the Emile Multicultural Center. And so with that, the city has already agreed to engage in this cooperative endeavor through real estate transactions, helping with the historical design, helping with the program design, helping to actually build the center, maintain the center, and then operate the center. So both of those are going to require a lot of staff commitment, which we're very excited to give, but we want to ensure we have the proper resources to do so. Originally, when we spoke to Council at the pre-budget planning session, we talked about bringing on for fiscal year '22, One FTE for Recreation. That was going to be our Recreation Manager, and then coming back to Council at the next pre-planning budget session to talk about the future of Parks and Recreation for the city of Bastrop. We would like to move up that timeline because of the opportunities that are now before us. And so staff is requesting that we move up the FTE we were going to ask for in fiscal year '23 with a mid-year budget amendment that we would bring back to Council to get additional resources in the area of recreation to ensure that we can fully leverage both of these opportunities along with maintaining and continuing to grow our current recreation program and membership levels, which is doing really well. It is weird to think that it's been just a year since we have officially been in the recreation business. A lot has happened. We have gotten into our temporary recreation building. We have built a really thriving membership base that is continuing to grow. We have programming. We have fitness classes. And with that, now these two amazing opportunities, one with the Emile Group and one through the St. David's Foundation to write our Parks and Recreation Master Plan to serve generations to come in our community. And so staff is asking, through acceptance of this grant of St. David's Foundation, permission for us to come back and request a mid-year budget amendment along with a better, more detailed plan as to what recreation and parks will look like for the future of the city of Bastrop. We are, again, just asking to move up the timeline from that pre-budget planning meeting that we would have done to let you know that plan now and ask for those resources now to ensure we can take care of these opportunities.
So I don't know if, Ms. Gleason, if you're the best person to ask her if the City Manager comment on it, but pulling that forward and doing the budget amendment, are the funds available because of excess sales tax? Or where's the money coming from?
Yes, ma'am. We, and to clarify, we're suggesting here that we add one position, one FTE. That would be part of that same mid-year budget amendment that CFO Waldron just mentioned that should be on your agenda in March. And to ask, to answer your question specifically, Mayor, yes. Specifically, the increase in sales tax revenues. Council, if we would have, if we would have predicted that kind of sales tax growth during the budget process, we would have budgeted for it? As it is, we were already, we already pushed that envelope pretty significantly. What we budgeted for, for fiscal '22 was a 10% increase in sales tax growth, which was a more significant percentage increase than I think we've ever budgeted for. And we're far out, we're far exceeding that every month. That's been, that's been a trend for at least a year now. That's been a trend even through COVID. And so I, I think we're typically conservative when we talk about sales tax revenues because of its inherent variability and elasticity. But I think there's a, there's a base here that we can now treat as the base, and that's precisely what we're talking about. If we, if we continue this trend with sales tax, we'll end the fiscal year with about $600,000 in sales tax revenues above what we budgeted. And so that's, that's not the only priority that we'll suggest ultimately for, for these sales tax proceeds. One of those priorities is continuing to make sure the balance is strong. But it is certainly one of them. And as Assistant City Manager Gleason mentioned, building a, a permanent, full-time, well-staffed recreation presence here in Bastrop has been a priority for quite some time.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, and then I'll call on Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Jackson?
I'm just super thrilled over this. I mean, almost 30 years I've been a proponent of Parks and Recreation in the city of Bastrop. And as my time comes to an end on the council, I'm just so glad to see that the motion is going forward with this. And it's just, it's something that's been long overdue. And I'm glad that we are, as a council and as a city, are recognizing the need for more recreation for the total community, not only the youth, but for the senior citizens and all assets, all facets of our community. So I'm glad to see this. And when the time comes, I'd like to make the motion to approve this resolution.
Okay.
But I mean, I'm just thrilled to see this happening. I think this whole project with the Emile Multicultural Center is, has quite a bit of interest in the community. And getting the master plan, which is definitely needed so that we can apply for more funding, is just a, it's a must for us to do this. And so I'm glad to have St. David's help us.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. One question, this, we have one year to use, is that correct? From the first till the end of the year or the front, from the time you start?
From the time we start the project. So we actually had a really great conversation yesterday with St. David's, and we spoke about us wanting to really begin the process by awarding a contract in June with the delivery of a master plan one year from then. And they were happy with that.
Is that, are that the terms of the grant? Say the terms, agreements from 1/1 of '22 to 12/31 of '22?
So that was, the conversation we had with St. David's was, we wanted to shift the timeline a little bit because when we applied for the grant, the Emile project was not on the horizon. And that is all happening very quickly.
Okay.
And so we wanted to ensure-
I was just going by what was in the packet.
Yes, ma'am. No, they-
And does our motion need to include moving the date? I guess is the other part.
If I might suggest that the motion could include allowing us to continue to talk to, with St. David's about the particulars of this contract and give us the authority to execute it upon that. And, and just to clarify one other thing about this, this June date that Rebecca just mentioned, we won't be wasting any time. And this, this makes sense in that over the next several months, what, what we, what we need to do is prepare an RFP or an RFQ and solicit proposals for a consultant to actually perform the master plan work. And so we haven't, we haven't developed that RFQ yet. We haven't solicited proposals yet, haven't evaluated that yet. And we think this is a realistic timeframe for, for us to do all of that and along that schedule, bring Council back sometime this summer. Around that timeframe, they awarded the contract. So we're not actually spending any money until that. And again, we spoke about all that with St. David's yesterday, and they were, they were very pleased to hear that part of the planning effort involves the Emile Multicultural Center. And so that, that made perfect sense to them.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers, did you have any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Just to be clear, because we talked about creating a new position and a, but this resolution is only on the grant, is that correct? Yes, we're not approving the position. I mean, we talked about a lot of things.
And so that'll happen in, we, we, and this is how we phrased it. We're asking permission, if you will, to go ahead and proceed with that plan. And you'll, you'll vote on that position along with the budget.
Right, I was just making sure. The only thing you're asking me to actually vote on right now is just this. That's why I just want to, because we talked about lots of things. So I wanted the public to know the only thing we're actually voting on is this grant.
That's correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Crouch?
I was just curious on the, for the master plan for the parks. That'll get us compliant with Texas Parks and Wildlife as well, right?
So that's a, that's a, that's a little more complicated than that. We, and I, and I do believe I've reported on this in prior weekly memos. We've, we've had some very productive and beneficial conversations with administrators at Texas Parks and Wildlife about just what it means to be in compliance with their grant requirements. And this, this is, this has changed. Their requirements and guidelines have changed a bit over the last few years. And so all of this is, is fairly recent. And it is, it is not a stringent a requirement to have an updated Parks Master Plan within the last five years as it used to be. It used to be more of an absolute thing. And now it's, it's more about points, right? And I, and I think out of 100, and I may be wrong about this, but I think having an up-to-date Parks Master Plan is worth five points. So it's, it's still a thing, but it's not as significant as it used to be. So I don't, I don't want to overstate it. There is another issue out there, which we've talked about before with regard to a prior grant that goes back several, several years. And the city hadn't been in compliance with those grant requirements because of some land use decisions made years ago by the city of Bastrop for property in Bob Bryant Park. And that's, that's still an easy fix. And what we need to do is substitute that acreage with other parkland. We had a Plan A for doing that. We've been told recently that Plan A doesn't work, so we had to come up with a Plan B. It's just, if I may, bureaucratic steps we've got to go through. But what we got, what we have to do is find some parkland in Bastrop that is an effective substitute. And we're, we're still finishing that up. And that is the more significant issue about grant compliance with TPWD. Certainly by the time we have projects to submit for grant funding as a result of this Parks Master Plan, we'll, we'll have all that straightened out.
Good deal.
Councilmember Rogers, did you think of another question?
I just wanted to bring up one more point, that this isn't a matching grant. It is just money we can use.
Well, that, but that's, that's essentially correct. Except to be complete here, I think we need to say that one of the grant requirements is that $125,000 FTE value in terms of, that's on the, so that's, that's not a match like we often think of it with FEMA or CDPT grants, but that is a requirement that we contribute to the mix. So in that sense, it is a match.
But it's in, it's in time of city staff. It's not a, it's not-
We're not, we're not writing a check.
It's not tax dollars, what I was trying to get to.
And while, while we're thinking about it and on the subject, Council, you'll, you'll also recall that this year's budget includes $50,000 in 4B EDC funding for a sports complex. The plan is to incorporate that analysis into this overall effort, too.
All right. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, in hearing all this, I'm happy to make the motion that we approve this resolution and make it, you know, a- and make it, you know, a, a carding to working with St. David's as far as the timeline and everything. And so I hope that it will be successful. And I just want to make the motion to go ahead and move forward.
Great. I have a resolution from Councilmember Jackson to approve Resolution Number R 2022-2020-23, authorizing the city manager to continue negotiations with St. David's to be compliant with the grant.
I second that.
And I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Definitely, yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Excellent. I know there's a lot of happy people. Thank you very much, council.
And Mayor, also, I'd just like to say that since this is going to be such a monumental, and I've worked on several master parks plans in Elgin here in the city and with Bastrop County. And I, even though I won't be a part of the city, if there's, if there are committees that are being formed to work with this, I'd love to be considered to work with it because I would volunteer to do that. And I'm doing it in advance to let you know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item 13C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-15 of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice's '22 General Victims Assistance Grant Program for a Victims' Assistance Specialist at a total cost of $62,376.87. With no matching funds from the city of Bastrop, authorizing the chief of police as the grantee's authorized official, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Nagy?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So for fiscal year 2023, I'm requesting approval for a grant, what we're calling the Victims' Assistance Specialist. If we are awarded that grant to come in fiscal year 2024, I will ask council to approve the grant for one more year and then maybe a couple of years after that. The total cost for the '23, '23 is going to be $62,374. This position is going to be a truly victim-focused position within our Criminal Investigations Division. It's going to create that central hub between the police department, of course amongst ourselves, but then also our other organizations that we partner with, such as the CAC or the Family Crisis Center. And really, the purpose of this is just to get better outcomes for those victims that are involved in crime. And that is it.
Chief Nagy, it was wonderful to see all of the letters of support that you got from the nonprofits that are directly involved with you and your, your entire team.
Yes, they're very, very supportive and appreciate, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Rogers?
I'd like to move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes. We're on the top of page five. Item 13D, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 20-22-09 of the Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for and establishing the procedures for a May 7, 2022 general election for Bastrop, Texas, and providing an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Good evening, Mayor and council. You have before you a resolution, we're asking you to pass for the city of Bastrop to call an election for the May 7 general election. And during this election, we will be electing council members for place one and place five. I'll be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Council, any questions for Madam Secretary?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We have called the election for May 7. I want to take this opportunity, packets are available. If you're interested in serving on city council, you could have already been picking up packets. They will continue to be able to be picked up until, I believe, February 18?
February 18 is the deadline to file.
February 18 is the last day to file your information if you're interested in running. All right, we're moving on to item 13E, consider action to approve ordinance number 2022-03 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for and establishing the procedures for a May 7, 2022 special election for the purpose of amending the Home Rule Charter and providing for an effective date. Mr. Borquist?
Mayor, council? Great, thank you, Colin. At our last meeting, we discussed the possibility of amending our charter for the May general election. The election is scheduled for May the 7th. If we are choosing to use that date, to remind you of the summary of the briefing last week, most of the edits that have been identified are minor in nature, mostly cleanup items. For the most part, we are simplifying several provisions to state that when engaged in that activity, we need to just comply with state law. So deferring to the election code or state law on annexations or whatnot will keep us from having to change the rules each time the legislature changed the rules. We also have some outdated provisions that were originally put in the charter in 2010 to facilitate the transition of new language back then that no longer serves any sort of purpose. Under state law, we're only allowed to amend our charter every two years. Our current charter suggests that we at least revisit it every six years. It was last done in 2016. So you add six years to that, it brings us to today. Going through the charter and the feedback I received from you last time, I've identified and crafted 11 propositions, and I can give you a quick summary. First is Prop A, which deals with annexation. It would delete the language that says we may annex with or without the consent of the property owner, and just says we may annex in accordance with state law. Prop B is our charter's effectuation of the state constitutional resign-to-run provision. Under the state constitution, if you have a term of more than two years, which means three or four, we have three, and you have more than a year and 30 days, you automatically announce your resignation from your current office by seeking candidacy to another office. The problem is, our charter currently says one year, when state law is really one year and 30 days. So we're adding that 30 days to make it consistent with the constitution. Prop C is regarding two readings of ordinances in order to pass them. State law does not specify how many times general ordinances must be read before adopted, but some city charters require two readings. Our current charter requires two readings, with an exception for emergencies, that being imminent threats to public health, safety, and that sort of thing. What Prop C will do is it will give future city councils the chance, when they think two readings is not necessary, one reading is enough, perhaps there is an urgency, perhaps you're dealing with a holiday and you're only meeting once that month, the city council could in that instance say, on agenda item 12, I make a motion to suspend the two-reading rule. And if that passes by a supermajority vote, the council could then go to vote on the ordinance with just one reading. If there's not a sufficient quorum, if it fails, well, then you do the usual procedure we do now, you pass it on first reading, and it can come back second reading for either an in-depth discussion or it gets put on consent. So it gives those future city councils the option. I would think that if an item is particularly controversial and citizens were to contact their council members or the mayor and want to thoroughly vet this, there probably would not be the supermajority votes to push it forward on one reading. That's how I've seen it work in other communities. Prop D, our charter says that when it comes to technical regulations, we will make them available in print form for purchase by the citizens. In reality, those are already available for free online, and so this proposition just recognizes that fact. Same with our Code of Ordinances. Our code is currently codified by MuniCode. Before that, it was Franklin Legal. It's been several years now that Bastrop has made its regulations available online for free, so there shouldn't be an obligation to print them and keep them in the various departments for sale to the general public, which is what our current charter requires. Prop F deals with your municipal court judges. State law already says the term of office is two years. Our ordinances says two years, but our charter says three. And so the best thing to do is just make that term conform with state law and as established by ordinance, which is what the Texas government code requires us to do anyway. When it comes to petitions for initiative or referendum, Prop G will simply say, once you file your petition, it will comply with the Texas Election Code. Because the Texas Election Code has rules about when and how you can supplement or amend petitions and then exceptions to that, rather than us getting that level of detail, we're already governed by the election code, we'll just defer to that under our charter. Prop H is the same thing, but it deals for petitions for recall. Those will also defer to state law. Prop I is one we talked about at length at our last meeting. It talks about the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently under the charter, it says there shall be nine members. We have stories of it being difficult to get that heightened quorum, that you, that a P&amp;Z of nine members is going to require five just to conduct business. And sometimes it's proven difficult to get willing, qualified volunteers to serve on P&amp;Z. And so what this proposition will do is it will lower the number to seven, and it says that the, the membership of P&amp;Z shall be established by ordinance. So it may be that we have nine. It may be that we have eight. It may be you have 15, if that's what some future city council decides to do by ordinance. The charter will just say the minimum number is going to be seven. State law puts that deference in the city council's hands. This matches it with the charter. Proposition J is just transitional language. I'm addressing two sections, 1403 and 1404. If you look at them, they were just implementing the transitions in our new code back in 2010. We've gone 12 years without needing that language. I say we repeal it. The final of the 11 propositions I bring before you and suggest you put before the voters is Prop K, which is just an across-the-board, go-through-and-remove the gender-specific language. For one reason, it's used inconsistently. Sometimes it'll say he, sometimes it'll say he or his, sometimes it'll say his or her. It, it's not even consistent, but there's no reason for it anyway. The current contemporary way of addressing this in ordinances and in codes of ordinances and charters is just to remove the gender-specific language. And in the explanatory document that was in your packets for tonight, I gave you some examples of what's in this code and what the replacements would be. So that's a rundown of your 11 propositions. If you wish to move forward with this charter amendment, then the action item would be to vote on the first reading of the ordinance that will call a special election for May 7, which will piggyback on the other elections that we're having that day. Questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Borquist. Council, we know, but I just want to remind the public that since so much of this is required by state law to be compliant, the advantage of doing this charter and taking it to the voters on May 7 is it's a whole lot cheaper when it is a general election, when we are sharing the cost with other taxing entities, because it doesn't, if we don't do it on May 7, we're going to have to do it, but then we would be paying for an election by ourselves. The other beauty of that being on a May 7 and a general election is that hopefully we have increased voter participation, so we truly hear the will of the community on the charter, because this is absolutely the city of Bastrop's constitution.
That is true.
Any questions for Mr. Borquist? Any concerns about any of the, I love the wording, "shall we conform with state law?" That should make it really, really clear of why we're, why we're doing things. So I thought you did a great job on the wording. Councilmember Jackson?
I'd just like to go ahead and move for approval. I think it's something we definitely need to do. And like you said, the savings we'll get from working together are definitely beneficial.
Absolutely. I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. Turns out, it's not just about calling the election, we have to actually do the election. So we're moving on to item 13F, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-10 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a joint agreement between the city of Bastrop and Bastrop County, Bastrop Independent School District, Bastrop Travis County's Emergency Services District Number One, city of Elgin, city of Smithville and Independent School District, Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number Two, Smithville Independent School District, and Bastrop County Water Control Improvement District Number Two, for the May 7, 2022 special and general election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Again, council and mayor, council. This item, as mayor stated, would allow us to enter into a joint agreement with the entities that the mayor read off. And in doing so, in going into an agreement with a joint agreement, this would allow us to save a lot. The cost, the estimated cost at this time is $10,168.25. That would be a great savings to be able to do it.
That's less than half than the election on Saturday is costing us.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve, but remind everyone, there is still an election on Saturday, even though this is the one in May.
There is an election on Saturday.
Second.
I'll give that one to Councilmember Crouch. Oh, it's his birthday. He gets the birthday second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we've called it. We've agreed to share the cost. Now we actually have to have somebody run the election. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a contract for election services between the Elections Administrator of Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop for May 7, 2022 special and general election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Mayor and council, this would allow us to enter into a contract with the Elections Administrator of Bastrop County, allowing them to take over the duties that the law does not prohibit us from transferring to someone else. We're still responsible for the duties that the law prescribes that we must keep in-house.
Like recounts. We learned that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Ms. Franklin works really hard. It's a lot of law to keep straight and keep our costs down, and really appreciate all her hard work on that effort. All right, item 13H, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-21 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor of Eva Ballard for, to place one of the Bastrop Housing Authority as required in Section 3.0 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Council, this is a place that by definition has to be a resident, and unfortunately, Ms. DeJoyes has passed away. And so Eva Ballard lives in one of the Texas Housing Authority properties, and I'm thrilled that she is interested in serving, and I respectfully request your confirmation of my appointment.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Crouch and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. Item 13I, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2022-12 of the Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, appointing Mayor Connie Schrader as the city of Bastrop's Clean Air Coalition representative as required in Article 2 of the Clean Air Coalition of the Capital Area Council of Government bylaws and establishing an effective date. Council, many of you know and remind the public that this is a position that Mayor Protem Nelson had been serving as, and since he will be voted out by the election on Saturday and when we canvass the votes, I am wanting to fill that position as we move forward. I respectfully request your confirm.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.[1787.32]
Yes. Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. Unfortunately, Councilmember Peterson, we're not on Item 14. We are going back to Item 2A and 2C. Mr. Borquez, do I have to reread them? I read them earlier. Do I have to reread them? Okay, I'm rereading them. It is 10, and we are going into executive session to discuss the following items. Item 2A, city council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interest associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number 3 at 385 State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas, 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. Item 2C, city council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in the city limits for possible parkland drainage or open space purposes. It's 8:11, and we are in executive session. Thank you, council. We are back in regular session at 8:41. We are out of executive session and, and in, back in regular session. We have no action as a result of our executive session. That brings us, Councilmember Peterson, to Item 14.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second? 8:41. I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson, and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Happy birthday to both of our council members. Be safe, stay warm, and we'll see you on February 8. Please vote at the election on Saturday, January 29. Good night.